Planning Commission pre-meeting to, oh, oh, and we're live. Thanks, Stephanie.
Yeah, you're good.
I would like to call the Planning Commission pre-meeting to order Tuesday, December 15th at 6:03 PM. A warm welcome to everyone joining us tonight, either through Facebook or Zoom. Speaking on behalf of the Planning Commission, we are also thankful for the wonderful holiday team that makes our job so much easier. With a crazy year coming to an end, we hope that our gift to each of you can bring warmth into your hearts and homes. Before we begin with our agenda, I'd like to give Paul, Stephanie, and John just an opportunity to address us. Paul, we'll start with you.
Oh, are we in the, do you want me to do the pre-meeting?
Yeah, we're gonna do the, we're just, no, we're just, um, anything you'd like to say to the Planning Commission.
Oh, yeah, I certainly would. Thank you for the wonderful gift I found in my office today. And the really, really nice touching card that went along with it, which I have now put on my door. So every time I come in and out, I get to look at it. But thank you for that beautiful throw. It's the perfect kind of thing for this kind of year. And it certainly with the little carrying thing is something that I really gonna, I'm really gonna cherish. I want to thank the planning commissioners, especially this year, for all of your hard work. I'm so grateful to be working with such good people here at the city and our planning commission. And our city council are just wonderful. You guys are always so cordial. And I want to just tell you how much it means to me that at the end of each meeting, invariably, you guys express your gratitude to the staff for the work to try to keep you updated and getting you the agendas. And I think there's no way for us to tell you how, how valuable that is. You know, that just puts a little gas in your tank when you're running low, when the planning commission says, staff, thank you. And I've worked for several jurisdictions, and this is the first one I've worked for, where it's just a, it's just a common thing for the planning commission to express their gratitude for the teamwork that we have. Hard to put a value on that. Thank you so much for your hard work during the year. And I really want to say that I think the new planning commissioners that have come on are just the right kind of personalities that we need to continue to have the great chemistry that we've had. So, so grateful for Marty and Howard and how they've added to the group. And I feel sad for those who've left us, but I just think this is an outstanding planning commission. Thank you. Thank you so much from me to you for everything and looking forward to our meeting tonight. And happy holidays.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. Um, John?
Yeah, well, I don't know if I can follow Paul's admiration there. That's just, I can just say kudos and thank you so much to you. There's what better example for a holiday community to come together in such an exemplary way as this planning commission? You know, I meet so many of your neighbors and members of your community and neighborhoods day in and day out who come to the city for assistance, guidance, help, you know, concern. And every other week when you meet, you seem to try to aspire to represent those individuals without even knowing who they may be. And it's always astounding to me, you know, and I participate in other planning commission meetings in my own community. And every time I come out of those sessions, I think, well, however blessed I am to be a part of and represent this holiday planning commission. So I really, really appreciate the, the kind gift that you gave and be able to use it, most likely be used by my wife more than it will be for me. I'll try to steal it away from her sometimes.
Thank you, John. Stephanie?
Um, I just want to say thank you too. I'm going to echo everything that John and Paul said. Thank you very much. I have, I, like I said in my email, one good thing that came out of COVID is I was able to now get to do these meetings with you guys and get to know you guys better and see how you guys work. And it's just been, it's just been really fun and a new admiration for you guys. And I appreciate you guys accepting me in and let me be part of the team. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for all you've done. Yeah, yeah. Thanks again to all of you, especially all you commissioners. It's great to represent you for the city of Holiday. This has been a real great thing for me to be the chair, and I appreciate you putting your trust in me.
Okay, Jan, I want to echo some of those sentiments. Also, I'm pretty impressed how the city and the planners and Stephanie and technology, how we were able to seamlessly move from live meetings to these meetings. And while I was telling Jan before you all came on, how much I miss Tuesday nights at City Hall with all of you. I just feel grateful that we're able to do this and our work has continued. And thanks to you guys for making it all happen because that, some of that technology is, well, outside my skill set. So, thanks you guys for making everything seamless.
You know, Ann reminded me, tonight we should be out to dinner, dang it.
At the cotton bottom, and I hear wonderful things about that. Yeah, great job.
Yeah, we should be at the cotton bottom tonight, but there's always the summer. Maybe we can do something in the summer instead.
Great idea.
Okay, let's move on. We have one item on our agenda tonight, which is a legislative nature. We'll hold a public hearing and then we'll be forwarding a recommendation to the city council for a rezone from R210 to RM. We have, John, are you here tonight to give us the overview on this rezone?
No, Paul will be.
Okay, go ahead, Paul. I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. John and I are both pretty familiar with this one. I, I, I think this one is a fairly straightforward rezon request. They're asking for RM instead of, you know, from R210. So they want to increase the density by about five dwellings there. They would get nine to 10 there, and they're looking to get about 15. The, I think if you look at the general plan, general plan's fairly straightforward here. This is in the Highland Drive master plan, the HDMP. This is in segment A. Segment A does not have the density constraints that segment B does. Segment C is pretty much, of course, the holiday crossroads area down to I-215. So, segment B is kind of the the density constrained one. And I think if you look at this, what you have is a a reputable developer who's already done a nice project in the village with the Holiday Row townhomes, which are just behind Ace Hardware, which are going up rather quickly. Of course, that density is a little bit different. But here, you're looking at a maximum of 16 dwellings an acre, which is usually what you get with apartments or townhomes or condos. They've given us a nice site plan layout showing three buildings. Frontage on Highland Drive, there's no connection into the neighborhood behind with the site plan. So it's really a matter of, is the request supportable by the general plan? Does it work for the neighborhood? Are there impacts on city facilities? Those kinds of things that would necessitate a recommendation, a negative recommendation from the planning commission of the council, you know, that those concerns are strong enough that you would say, no, it really needs to stay R2. You know, I think if you look at the general vicinity, you do have multiple family directly to the east and to the south, several to the south. You've got a mixture of zoning to the north and south, where it kind of alternates back and forth. I think the real issue, one of the real issues here is to look at Highland Drive as a whole from 3,900 down to Murray Holiday Road, the, and say, you know, how does this work? Does this work? And so if you look closely at the zone map, you'll see that there is RM zoning about a block to the north and about a block to the south. So I think that's up to the planning commission tonight to determine whether or not they feel that you feel a recommendation to the planning commission is supportable for this to go a little bit higher density. If you look at the general plan designation, the way I read the map is that this is MDRS. MDRS recommends R2, RM, which is what they are requesting. So it does seem to, it does appear to meet the general plan designation for that spot. And so I could go on and on. I've given you two or three pages of background here. I didn't focus on a lot of negatives because honestly, I, I, I was looking at just kind of the general plan and looking at its relative location, Highland Drive, which carries probably the second most amount of traffic in the city on an average day. Murray Holiday Road between the mall and the clock tower in the village is our highest traffic. And then Highland Drive, slightly less than that. So, anyway, we've gotten quite a bit of public comment in. I wouldn't, I don't know if it's half and half, but we've gotten a few comments in support and of course, several comments opposed. And that will be up to the planning commission to sort those out and consider whether or not the request should be supported or not. The staff report focuses again mostly on the general plan and kind of the supporting documentation, the language in the general plan and the zoning ordinance about whether or not you should consider this positively or negatively. You have a couple of options in front of you tonight. You can, you can recommend approval, you could recommend denial, you could continue for further study. So those are things that you could consider tonight with this one. The TRC felt pretty positive about this rezone simply because of the, the core issues here. This location on Highland Drive and support from the general plan and land use in the vicinity, which is attached. This, again, this is a little bit higher, but it does beg the question, is 16 units an acre too dense for Highland Drive? And of course, most cities, their, their density cap is much higher than ours. We have RM scattered around this, the city. If you were to look at something that's relative to this, Alah Chappell, which is outside the village on Murray Holiday Road, has about twice this density. Holiday Row, which this applicant is building in the village right now has over 24 units an acre, so it's more than 50% more dense than this. John, correct me if I'm wrong on any of these numbers, but I'm, I'm pretty sure on those. And then, of course, we have numerous RM projects near the mall and around the city that are well above 30 units an acre. Those are apartments. These are townhomes. So without getting into site plan issues, which is kind of putting the cart before the horse, if you just look at this from strictly a land use perspective, the TRC felt that it merited a positive recommendation to the city council, but of course, that's in your hands. So if you want, I'll answer any technical questions. There's plenty of information in the staff report.
Any questions?
I have one question, Paul. And I was reading some of the public comments. So this particular area is governed by certain height maximums. What is the height maximum? Is it 36 for this area?
Unless you have an acre, you're capped at 35. Okay, so this does not have an acre. So if it goes RM, you can have four, if it were RM and it had an acre, it could have 40 feet. But this does not, this does not. So.
Does not have an acre, so it, okay.
At R210, what is the height that they can go to?
I think it's 32.
It's the same, same height, regulations based on height, on lot size.
The one's 35 and one's 32?
They're both 35.
35.
All 35. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. This is Elisa. What about setbacks? Side and rear yard setbacks, do they change?
Well, those are set by the, by the zone. I actually think these setbacks between buildings in the RM are greater. I think we have a, John, don't we have a 30-foot setback in there between buildings in the RM?
Between main buildings, yes.
Yeah. And so in the R2, you wouldn't have that.
What about, what about where it abuts neighborhoods?
Well, they'd have to meet graduated height. And since this is, they're not applying for.
I'm not asking about the height. I'm asking about the distance from the back of the building to the lot of, say, the condos behind it.
Yeah, tho- those are set by the zone. I think it's 20 feet.
Okay.
And, and again, you still have graduated height rules as well. Now, if they were to get this zone, I, I don't know if they've indicated yet if they're, would be applying for a PUD. John, do you recall in the discussion with them if they're going to be applying for a PUD?
There are no indication they're applying for a PUD.
That's my recollection too. So if they're not, then they would have to stick by the standard setbacks in the zone. And they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to move the buildings any closer
There, thank you.
than, than the minimums in the zone.
Also, R210 is the same, same as RM is what you're showing here on this table?
Yep, exactly the same.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mary Ann, did you have a question?
I do. I looked at this chart earlier and I didn't see a big difference between the R210 and the RM except in the density. So what is the maximum density they could put on this property in the R210? And is 15 the maximum they could put if they were granted that in the RM?
Again, because we're not in site plan, we haven't done those calculations. Here's the way the ordinance basically works. If you have an acre, you can have 16 units. But got to remember, we do have to take some area out for driveways and stuff. So if they had an acre, it would be probably not quite 16. So they may be in terms of a net here, 14 to 15. And in the R210, it would be nine to 10. So it's about, you know, it's a bump from nine, 10 to 15, it's five to six units an acre more. And since they have less than an acre, you're talking about a net of perhaps five more dwellings here between R210 and RM.
So that's about 50% more density? If I, about, okay. And, and isn't that the biggest difference with the height and setbacks and everything else is mostly the same?
Yeah.
That's really the biggest difference?
It's density.
Okay.
Yep.
So Paul, what is the approximate density of the adjoining condo, the Tanglewood?
Uh, I, I didn't look at that. It looks to me like it's, I would say it's, I, I was developed under Salt Lake County a long time ago. Do you know, John?
I, I think, I think it's about seven units an acre.
So the density is a lot less than what's proposed here. For some reason, I was thinking that was similar or?
I, I don't think it's hugely different because if you look at that, they've got one of those are big twins in there. So you've got.
Units over there.
How many, John?
I, I count 18. There's two, two per building, two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14, 18. I'm not sure what this is.
18, on how much land, less than?
I bet that's two acres. I bet they've got about twice the area of this one. Maybe not. We could look up that plat, but it's not going to be as dense because I don't think those are as tall.
My ask is just kind of a comparison for, for perspective on the density and maybe the concerns that are being raised by the residents. If there isn't a significant difference, then a density comparison may be a moot point in some way.
Yeah, that, I mean, if you're asking, you know, staff perspective, if you, if 16 can't be built on Highland Drive, then where could you build it? I mean, we have it, we have it all over the city that doesn't front on Highland, but Highland Drive's a major, you know, is our, is our main arterial for the city. And if you can't do 16 there, it kind of begs the question, then why do we have it in the general plan as RM is appropriate? So it's, I guess it's really a question of are we going to stay with the, is the future the same as the present, or is the future the future? Are we going to allow for some additional units, additional dwellings or not? And what would be the reason for allowing them or not allowing them?
Any more questions from commissioners? Okay.
One thing, though, it looks like we have a guest on our, in our work session. I'm, do you want to introduce him?
Oh, we, I was going to do that in our main meeting, but Brad Christensen is Christopherson, sorry, Brad, is representing legal counsel tonight.
Okay, all right, all right. Good to know. I just, I just wasn't familiar, didn't know who you were. That's great. Welcome.
Okay, um, the only other things on our agenda tonight, last meeting, we talked about our 2021 calendar. So we'll just go to approving that tonight. And we went through the planning commission bylaws. We did add a few things. John has put those in. We are going to go through those and approve. And if there's anything, any other additions, so we can get through that tonight. I'm hoping everyone was able to read those in the last two weeks. And then we will go into our work session, which will be an overview of pending ordinance amendments. And John sent out a list of things that we will briefly discuss unless we're going to be here till midnight. So, right, John?
I want the hurrah, right?
Yeah, yeah. So if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to close and then we'll just have a brief five-minute break.
Marty Banks makes a motion to close the working session.
Ann Macken seconds that motion, Mr. Banks.
We have a motion for Marty, a second from Ann. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
Okay, we will start right up in five minutes at 6:30.
Sounds good.
If you're just joining us, we would like to welcome everyone who is listening in tonight. We have just completed our pre-meeting. And I would like to call the Holiday City Planning Commission meeting to order on Tuesday, December 15th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. My name is Jan Bratchon. I am the chair of the Holiday Planning Commission with Chris Layton as my vice chair. Planning commissioners joining us tonight are Mary Ann Ricks, Elisa Lloyd, Ann Macken, Howard Layton, and Marty Banks. We also have with us tonight from the City of Holiday staff, city manager Gina Chamnis, city planner John Tierlink, city planner Paul Allred, city recorder Stephanie Carlson, and Holiday City Legal Counsel Brad Christopherson. Before we start on our agenda, I would like to read the following statements. First one regarding COVID-19. I, Jan Bratchaw, as the chair of the Holiday, City of Holiday Planning Commission, do hereby find and declare as follows. Due to the emergency conditions which currently exist in the state of Utah and specifically in Salt Lake County and the City of Holiday as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the holding of public meetings with an anchor location is defined in the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. And the risk to those who may be present at an anchor location be, can be substantially mitigated by holding public meetings of the planning commission pursuant to electronic means that allow for public participation via virtual means. And the city has the means and ability to allow virtual participation in the public meetings in accordance with the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act. Now, therefore, based upon the foregoing, for 30 days from the date of this order, meetings of the City of Holiday Planning Commission shall be conducted by virtual means without an anchor location. Now, I'd like to read a short summary about the planning commission. The City of Holiday Planning Commission is a volunteer citizen board whose function is to review land use plans and other special studies, make recommendations to the city council on proposed zoning map and ordinance changes, and approve conditional uses and subdivisions. The planning commission does not initiate land use applications, rather acts on applications as they are submitted. Commissioners do not meet with applicants except at publicly noticed meetings. Decisions are based on observations, recommendations from the professional planning staff, the city's general plan, zoning ordinance and other reports, by all verbal and written comments and by evidence submitted, all of which are part of the public record. Thank you for letting us get that out of the way. I'd now like to give our city manager Gina Chamnis an opportunity to update us on some staff changes at Holiday City.
Thank you so much, Jan. And good evening to all you planning commissioners. A few months ago, I came and let you know that anticipating Paul Allred's retirement, we would be beginning a search for a new community development director. We began advertising for that position in October and had a tremendously well-qualified group of applicants. From that group of applicants, we selected Lenise Davenport, who has had a 20-year career with Wasatch Regional Council, the metropolitan planning organization for this area to start as our new community and economic development director beginning January 4th. Lenise brings with her a lot of experience at a regional level dealing with planning issues such as economic development and housing, and has also spent the last four years working with the legislature on planning issues. So she, she has a unique perspective, which I think will serve our city well. At the same time, we wanted to recognize the tremendous assets and service that John Tierlink brings to the city. And so we're realigning some responsibilities between the Community and Economic Development Director and a new position that John will be filling, a planning manager. And in that role, he will really have a primary responsibility for day-to-day planning activities and most especially responsibility for supporting the planning commission. Is, so you'll be seeing a lot more of John. And he will clearly have responsibility for that, that liaison with you. So we're excited for these changes. At the same time, this is not a goodbye to Paul, not yet. We're not letting him escape. At the same time, this is not a goodbye to Paul, not yet. We're not letting him escape so easily. He'll be serving as a Planning Advisor for the next several months as, as we prepare for what, what our city looks like post-Paul Allred.
That's going to be a tough thing to, big, big shoes to fill.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Gina, and thank you all that you do for our city too. We appreciate the direction you're taking our city.
Well, thanks so much, and I really want to extend that same thank you to you and to all our Planning Commissioners, particularly for your resilience this year in what has been extraordinary circumstances and for, for just continuing on doing your job and serving our community and adapting to all of this, the new technology and new ways of engaging our public.
Great. I think we're all proud. I know I can speak for all of us. We're all proud to represent our, the members of Holiday City. So thank you.
Congratulations, John Tierlink.
Yes.
There you go.
Yeah. I guess we get to bother him more now is really what Gina just said. So there you go.
And our time with Paul is limited. We're going to have to bother him quickly.
Yeah.
All you want. Everybody knows his cell number, right?
Yeah. Okay, so let's move on to our agenda. Agenda number one tonight is a public hearing for a zone amendment, a rezone from R210 to RM located at 4545 South through 4551 South Highland Drive. Paul, are you doing this from our staff? You're going to give us the overview?
Yes. Overview here is not super complicated. This is an area with a mixture of attached multifamily to the south and to the east. There is some single family to the north, and there is one single family home directly to the south. It's fairly heavily wooded. This is on Highland Drive, so access would be directly from Highland for any future development. I don't want to touch too much on the future development. It's really about the land use tonight, the zone itself. So the request is to go from R210, which is in the neighborhood of no, eight units an acre to around 15. R28 would be in the neighborhood of 10 units an acre. So you'll see some surrounding development that's in that eight to 10 units an acre or a little bit less. Holiday Farms, Tanglewood. And I'm trying to think of the other one. Anyway, the, this is, this property is a little bit less than an acre in area. And what's being proposed, if the zoning is granted, would be some townhomes that would be very similar or somewhat similar to those being built by the Ace, behind the Ace Hardware Store in the Holiday Village. Now, those are a higher density product, but they would be similar in style because it's the same developer. So Sequoia Development, Ashley and Kevin Ludlow, we've worked with them several times in the past. They are very good to work with. They're a very reputable development team. And they built the Hyatt Hotel and the, the development up there with the Hyatt Canyon Slope Square on 6200 South, that four-acre project there has turned out quite nicely. So we know the applicants. This property, again, fronts on Highland Drive. The general plan is our guiding document here. Now, the general plan is an advisory document. It's not binding. The zone is what is the binding rule here, but the general plan kind of suggests or recommends what future land you should be. And I think the real emphasis here needs to be on the future. And so if we're looking at this, you'll see that the Highland Drive Master Plan is, this is in Segment A. And the Highland Drive Master Plan from 39th all the way down to I-215 has three segments, and this is in Segment A on the north. Segment B starts south of the mall, and Segment C really starts at Van Winkle and Highland, and goes down to 215. Unlike Segment B, which is that middle section where Cafe Madrid is, and in that area, Spring Lane and Lakewood and those, there, there's a density cap down there of five units an acre. In this case though, there is no specific density cap in terms of the number of dwellings per acre. So again, if you're looking at what's being proposed, is they're proposing 16 units an acre. This doesn't have an acre, so I'm not sure they would get 16. But to give some perspective on the density being requested, it would be less dense than what you see there behind Ace Hardware in the village, which is probably a 50% again higher. John, correct me if I'm wrong in that one, but isn't that one over 20 units an acre? It's probably about 24?
Oh, yeah.
Holiday Row? Yeah, so this would be, this would be a chunk less dense than that one. And Alash Appel, which is just west of the village, is around 33 units an acre. So this would be about half of that or less than half of that on a much smaller site. To give you some other perspective, you know, these projects that are nearby directly to the east and to the southeast, those are probably at 50 to, well, without knowing the exact area, they're less dense than this would be. So this was probably in the neighborhood of 50% again higher in terms of density. Now, going back to the general plan, you'll see that, you know, recently, the Planning Commission recommended approval of Chapter Two, which is our, our land use element. That went to the council, which was approved last week. And we sent that off to the state along with our moderate income housing element. Chapter Two of the general plan does have an emphasis on looking to the future and the removing of barriers to housing. Specifically, Chapter Two, Page Seven, Page Nine, Page 10, and Page 13, and Page 14 all give the general direction of the city toward the future. There are some broad goals in the general plan, but specifically the one that needs to be looked at is on Page Eight, which is in your staff report, which touches on the MDRS District in the general plan on the future land use map. And that indicates that RM, which is the zone being requested, is the appropriate zone for this location. So I've got, it's a fairly detailed staff report. In the end, because this property fronts on Highland, because it's future-looking, and because of Chapter Two saying, look, we need to do more to provide more affordable housing and increase the housing stock everywhere because there's a massive housing shortage. The Technical Review Committee looked at this favorably and felt that it merited a positive recommendation. So the TRC has recommended approval of the rezone request based on eight items at the end of your, at the end of your report. So I'll answer any questions you might have without trying to get too far into the weeds. The developer did, excuse me, the applicant did send us some, a kind of a oblique view of what the site might look like with the buildings on it. They are proposing kind of a three-building layout, a five, four, and a six-unit building kind of spaced on the site. So again, we're looking at zoning, but everybody wants to get into the site plan issues. But those issues would come later, the technical issues on setback and building height and all that. But we can get into that if you want to.
Any, any questions for Paul, Planning Commissioners? No? Okay, maybe we answered, got all of our questions earlier in our pre-meeting. Okay, Stephanie, do we have our applicant with us? Do we have Kevin or Ashley, who's representing Sequoia tonight?
I've got both of them. So I'll be like Kevin in and Ash, well, Kevin, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Who else do you, who else do you need on?
Put Ashley. Let Ashley on, and that'd be great.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so Kevin, which one of you are going to be speaking tonight?
Well, I'll turn some time over to Ashley. I think, thank you, thank you, Paul. I just wanted
Kevin, can you just give us your name and address for the record?
Oh, absolutely. Kevin Ludlow, 9055 South, 1300 East.
Great, thank you. Go ahead. Oh, Kevin, we lost you.
Okay, you got me now. They went, I don't know, something happened, somebody there.
Oh, now we've got a picture too. Okay, great.
So, yeah, somebody did something and it just added me. So great, thank you. Did you get my address and?
Yes, I did. Yep, it's all here. Go ahead.
Well, I thought Paul did a great summary of what we want. I just want to say also, thank you, Paul, for your great service to the city. We've loved working with Paul and wishing the very best in his future endeavors. And we, we also enjoy working with John. We're glad he's still there. He's a great asset to the city. So thanks to both of you. And thanks to the Planning Commission for hearing us tonight. And I'll turn the time over to Ashley and let her give you a few more details on the project. But I think, Paul, we think it fits, we believe it fits, and we believe it, like Paul said, it helps create a little bit more affordable housing without taking away from the city at all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, Stephanie, do we have Ashley on?
I'm here.
Okay, hi, Ashley.
Hi.
For us for the record, and then we'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, Ashley Atkinson, 9055 South, 1300 East, Sandy, Utah.
Great.
Um, we're so excited to be back here. It's been almost two years since we were here presenting Holiday Row. We really enjoy working with Holiday City, and we're thankful that you all trusted us to develop in the village. We're thrilled with how successful Holiday Row has been. Our first buyers are just moving in, and we think that the local businesses are going to start to feel their presence here soon. As Paul mentioned, there is a big barrier to housing in the state and especially in Holiday City. We took a risk with Holiday Row. We created something that really hasn't been done in Salt Lake Valley, custom row homes. They're a little bit denser, which is helping us keep them attainable. But we're doing it without sacrificing design and quality and open space. And we think this site on Highland Drive is a perfect place to double down on that concept. Paul talked about how it does conform with the city's general plan. But furthermore, this particular rezone isn't going to adversely affect neighbors from the current zone that the property currently is. The high restrictions between the current zone and the proposed zone are pretty much the same. They are the same. The rare setbacks are also the same. The side setbacks actually are a little bit more restrictive for us in this new zone that we're proposing than the current R210 zone. With row home, with the row home design that we're looking at doing, each home will have a two-car garage. So all the parking's hidden. We wanted to feel really residential. That was some of the comments that we had in the neighborhood meeting, that people want, people live there, and they want, they want the area to feel residential. So we plan on doing that. We plan on keeping ample green space. And we believe in, you know, Holiday Row. We're excited for it to be finished, so you can see it's going to be beautiful. And we want the same beautiful architecture down here at one of Holiday City entrances. So, Paul, is there any way I can show that rendering from my screen?
I think John might have it. John, do you have that rendering?
The, the one that you sent earlier, the one you sent earlier today.
Yeah, so this just gives you an idea of our proposed concept here. And if you can picture that area of the city, I do feel that it really fits in with that area.
What, how many trees are going to be taken down to accomplish this? Are there going to still be trees on the east side of the property, or is there a lot being taken down to build?
We don't know that because, like Paul said, we're just asking for the rezone right now. We have an idea. You can see here, I think we have to have 20 feet setback in the back, which a piece of that will probably have to be a road to make a loop, but a lot of that will also be landscaping. If, if we do remove trees, we try to remove trash trees, and we try to replace them with, with better trees. So we, we love trees.
Great. Planning Commissioners, does anyone have any questions for Ashley before we go to the public? Okay, so Ashley and Kevin, we might have questions after, but we, we need to open the public hearing. We'll talk to the public and we'll let you respond at the end if needed.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Before opening the public hearing, I'd like to remind everyone that any comments already submitted by email will be part of the public record from this meeting. All of the Planning Commissioners have received your comments, and we have read them in advance. Let me quickly explain the public hearing process on Zoom. Raise your virtual hand, and you will be acknowledged by Stephanie Carlson, our City Recorder, and you will be given the opportunity to speak. Just a few guidelines for those of you that are participating with us tonight for the first time. You will be given one opportunity to address the Planning Commission with approximately three minutes time, five minutes if you're representing a group. If you are following someone who has already spoken, please tell us if you agree with their comments without repeating them, and then provide us with any new information. If you have any questions, please address me. Your questions will be answered by our staff, legal counsel, or the applicant after all of the public has had the chance to speak. Okay, Stephanie, do we have anybody that would like to speak tonight?
Yes, our first one, Carol Van Hook.
Okay. Carol, are you there?
Hold on, let me get her to unmute. She. There we go. Carol, are you there?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, Carol, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Carol Van Hook, 4532 Tanglewood.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. First of all, I have a question about the city plan. When they talk about affordable housing, what kind of price range are we talking?
Okay, that, we will answer that question at the end of all the public comment, but I've got it down and we'll make sure.
Thank you. On behalf of, of Tanglewood, our biggest concern is the density. It's changing the, the feel of the neighborhood. The loss of trees is another big issue. New trees can be planted, but they won't be as tall as what we have. And currently, the trees that are there shield us from the properties that are there. Other big concern, which is really one for the Commission to address, is the traffic on Highland Drive. We know, you know, we've had three deaths in the last six months. And one of our concerns is the entry into, onto Highland Drive and the increased traffic that will go right along our fence line on the east side and on the north side according to the, the proposed plan. And wondering why it couldn't just be one central drive in and out. Density is one of our chief concerns. And a question is to what, what benefit there is to the neighborhood when eight units could be built there, four units of two, of two buildings, four buildings with two units in each building? How having more units in that $400,000 to $700,000 price range is going to increase the, what the benefit will be to Holiday City and what the benefit will be to that particular area? Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate your thoughts. Thank you, Carol. Appreciate your thoughts. Okay, Stephanie?
Uh-huh, Wilma? Let's see. Wilma, are you there?
I am, yes.
Okay, state your name and address for us, Wilma.
Wilma Atkins, forty-five twenty-seven Tanglewood Drive.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you very much. First of all, I agree with what Carol has said. What I didn't understand is when I saw the picture of the entrance or exit, whichever it was, to and from Highland Drive, it did not look like it has any, any way to get off of Highland Drive in order to turn in or come out. I'd like to see that picture again.
Can we pull that up, John?
Jan, do we want to remind everyone that this isn't a site plan review? And that those issues will be addressed in the future. This is a zoning.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. I appreciate that. Yes.
Okay, but that sure doesn't look adequate.
Yeah, this is just a proposed, they're just showing this, but they're asking for a zone change, not a site plan.
Okay, put me back on mute.
Okay, thank you, Wilma. Okay, Stephanie?
Okay, one more, Ross Nakamura. See.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hi, Ross, name and address for us, please.
Ross Nakamura, I'm speaking for myself. Forty-five forty South Tanglewood Drive. My property or my unit directly would abut this development on my west side. So, obviously, I have a interest in what happens with this. Well, I'll just rattle through the things. I don't care about the trees. Most of the trees on that property is trash. They're Chinese hounds and it's a lot of work every year cleaning that up and trying to keep it out of our gardens. However, the higher density concerns me because when I do the, the math for the number of units times two cars, that's, was that fifteen units? Is that correct?
That's what they're proposing, but remember, we're just talking about a zone change, but that is the max they could do for, if that's what they're approved for.
Right, okay, that's three cars. And that much more traffic will push more pollution into our yard. And I know this isn't part of the discussion, but the height of those buildings will cut a lot of the sunlight out. We've done an immense amount of work, spent thousands of dollars trying to get our garden fixed. And it, that would pretty much destroy it.
Did you, did you know regardless of the zone, that the height is the same? If it's a R-two-ten or an RM?
Okay, I've heard that argument before. But if you have a higher density, you're gonna put more buildings in. I mean, that's just how the economics work. And
More unit.
More units.
Not necessarily more square footage.
Yeah, more. So, let me ask a question. Is this pretty much decided?
It is not decided.
My voice, my time, trying to talk.
The, the Planning Commission is here tonight to make a recommendation to approve or deny a, a zone change to the city council. So, our recommendation goes on to the city council and the city council makes the final decision. But they, they weigh highly on what the Planning Commission recommends. So, that's what we're doing here tonight. We're sending a recommendation on to the city council.
While you'll forgive me, by the tenor of this meeting, it sounds like decisions been made. So, it's a little annoying. I'm the one that has to live with it. And I have concerns and I, you know, I want to ensure that they are acknowledged and recognized.
They are. We appreciate you coming to our meeting and that we enjoy public comment. That's how we make our decisions.
Okay.
Thank you, Ross. Stephanie?
Okay, Ellen Mitchell?
Hey.
Unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Name and address, please.
My name is Ellen Mitchell. I live at four five five three South Highland Drive. I live in a unit called, or complex called Chase of Holiday. We are directly south. Our driveway will abut this property. We're a small community, three, three duplexes. We're gated and, you know, we're new to this community. We've only been here three and a half years. And we moved here because it was secure, it was quiet, it is private. And our concern truly is exactly what everybody else has said, the density. We will have far more noise. We will have, and, and I, I know what you're saying about the height will be the same, whatever. But with that many buildings, our privacy is gone. We will be in a fishbowl and so will Tanglewood. We will have people peering in on top of us. We are, you know, one level and then we have a basement level, so our, we have a real concern about having this size of a community put next to us. And, and we were told at the original meeting that there were sixteen units going in. And, and now I hear you saying that there are fifteen. And when we ask about affordability at the meeting with Sequoia, they kind of backed away from this affordability thing. They wouldn't give us any numbers on how much these units will cost. And I'm looking at these units. These are not gonna be affordable units. They're high-end. And that's fine. I'm not complaining about that. I think what I'm complaining about is the fact that they're trying to cram something in on a small area that is going to impact us greatly. And that's my concern. And I, I kind of agree with the gentleman before because I, I hear the tenure of this, the tenor of this meeting and I, and it does, does kind of feel like this has already been decided. So, you know, I'm glad you're hearing from the people who live in this community because this is important to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Okay, we have Marcel. Marcel, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Marcel, name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes. We need your name and address, Marcel, for the record.
Um, so, I'm on here as Marcel, but this is actually Ellen DeLima, my husband.
Okay, Ellen.
Forty-five thirty-three Tanglewood.
Okay.
And I agree with Ellen and everyone that's spoken. My issue is density more related to safety. I have two elementary school-age kids. I have one in middle school and I've applied, they go, they're in the French program and I've applied for them to go to the Wasatch School because we have problems picking them up after school because my husband and I both work. And I'm just concerned having so many cars in and out.
Ellen, we've lost your audio.
For this air.
Ellen, you're cutting in and out. We're not able to hear your.
Okay, shoot, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes.
Okay, so, I'll just try to speak quickly. My concern is with the density, with how many cars will be coming in and out.
Ooh, we've lost you again. Stephanie, is that her connection? Can you tell?
I, I think it is her. So, let's, let me mute her for, let me mute her for a minute. Let's go to somebody else real quick and see if that's the same problem.
Okay.
Steven Barton.
Okay.
Hi, hi, this is Steven Barton at forty-five forty-four Tanglewood Drive.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. So, my comment has to do with public safety as well. As you look at that map, the box shaded and outlined in yellow. If you look to the, directly to the west of that, that's the entrance to the Macy Shopping Center. My concern is having up to thirty cars directly cutting across east to west in a fashion across Highland Drive to get into the Macy Shopping Center. And, you know, the extreme danger of traffic in that intersection is there's a vigil of, you know, two deceased people that intersection Highland Drive and forty-five South and adding that much congestion of the traffic is not safe for public safety. And that is my concern and the comment.
Okay, thank you, Steven. Okay, Terry? Terry, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Terry, get your name and address for the record, please.
Terry Lemon, forty-five thirty-eight South Tanglewood Drive. Do I understand you correctly that this acreage is a little shy of?
Oh, we lost Terry.
Hold on, where'd she go? Oh, we lost her altogether, so let's see if she gets back on.
Okay, we'll wait.
Okay, let's go to Robert Hill.
Okay, before we go on, just a reminder. If you agree with what someone has said previously, let's not say the same things. Let's just agree and not repeat them. If you have some new things to comment on, that'd be great. Okay, so who do we have next?
Robert Hill.
Yes, I, actually, this is Deborah Hill, Robert Hill's wife.
Okay, Deborah, could you give us your address, please?
It's forty-five fifty-three South Highland Drive, Unit A.
Hey.
And we agree with the former community speakers about the issues that are involved here. So, you don't want me to specify them, right?
Unless you have something new, we, I've been taking some detailed notes, so I know what everyone has said.
Okay, then.
Yes, we, we want additional information, if we can get it, about the drive access into the Chase of Holiday condominiums. Will, will that fence impact our driveway into those condominiums?
You're talking on the north side?
On the north side.
No, on the south side.
Excuse me, on the south side.
South side of the proposed units. Will there be a new fence there or what, what kind of division will there be between the new units and the Chase of Holiday driveway? Yeah, again, we're, we're talking about a, a zone change. We're not talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's something that will come up regardless if they get a zone change or not, if they're gonna develop there. But that's something that will need to be addressed, but thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Stephanie, anyone else?
Yes, Michael.
Michael, are you there?
Michael, can you hear us?
We don't hear you, Michael.
Okay, let's hold him for a minute. Let's go back to, let's see. Okay, let's try, let's, let's try Monique.
Monique.
John, can you zoom that out a bit? That image?
Hello, I'm Monique Nelson. My address is forty-five fifty-two Tanglewood.
Thank you.
Hey, welcome, Monique.
Thank you. I mostly would just like to agree with what the residents have already stated and I am opposed to the rezoning. And my reasons mainly are for the high-density housing. I am in favor of maybe seeing some improvement to the property there. I think that would be beneficial to Holiday and to our neighborhood. But I do not like the idea of seeing fifteen units built in such a small condensed space. A part of the reason that, the appeal of buying in Tanglewood was that it's secluded and it feels very private, but having fifteen units right up against my west fence, I would agree with what Ellen said about feeling like a fishbowl, someone looking in and, and also obstructing my, you know, sunlight for my garden that I work so hard in and a lot of those things that have already been stated. So, thank you for our considerations here.
Okay, thank you, Monique.
Okay, let's try, we've got Terry Lemon again. Let's see if we can. Terry, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we can hear you. Go ahead, Terry.
Yeah, I agree with what everybody else has said, but did, am I understanding you correctly that the acreage on that property is a little shy of what the current zoning allows?
It's just, it's just shy of an acre total.
And how many dwellings can you put on an acre?
We, we'll address that. I think it's, I think it's less than fifteen.
Wow. That, that's my concern because of the density, the traffic. You know, how are they gonna landscape between our buildings for the noise? The traffic on the Highland Drive, that's gonna be a real bear to, for them to pull in and out of. But mostly, I'm with the one person, I'm not buying that these are gonna be affordable housing. I don't know what people think affordable housing is. But these will not be affordable housing for the average people that are the ones needing affordable housing. These people are gonna have to make a lot of money to be able to afford these units. So, if the property does not allow for the increase of dwellings, I'm, I'm against changing the zoning because there was a reason why it was zoned the way it was. And it's, I mean, it's obvious. This is how they make their money and the more they can squeeze on a piece of property, the more money they, they make. And I'm sure that costs them a pretty penny. But the increased density and having the road along our fence line, not twenty feet in, that concerns me on their development part.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Appreciate your comments.
Okay, let's try. Let's, let's try Michael again and let's see if we can get him. Michael, are you there? He's unmuted. We just cannot hear him. Okay, let's try one more. Let's try Marcel. Let's see, let's see if they're still there.
Ellen, are you there?
Uh, yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Did you wanna add anything else from what you wanna agree, or do you have any new information you'd like to add?
No, I mean, I agree with what everyone has said and my concern remains the public safety and especially No, I mean, I agree with what everyone has said and my concern remains the public safety and especially my kids. You know, we walk a lot in the neighborhood and I just think it's too many cars.
Okay, okay. Thank you for coming back in so we could hear you. We appreciate your comments, Ellen.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I do not have anyone else. We can try Michael one more time. Michael, are you there? Yeah. But I, oh, here we have one more. Sorry, Linda.
Linda, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you, Linda. Give us your name and address for the record.
Okay, it's Linda Cooley, 4529 Tanglewood Drive.
Okay, do you have anything new to add or do you want to agree with all of the comments so far?
I agree with all of the comments so far. And I do want to emphasize that that density would be harmful to us. We just have a peaceful little neighborhood and there would just be a lot of pollution and cars and it would just make it more difficult to have a nice, calm, serene neighborhood. And I do, I didn't realize before that it's right across from Macy's entrance. That's really going to be terrible for entering and exiting. People will be going left into Macy's and left into that complex. If there's a lot of cars, that'll stack up cars both ways down Highland Drive. So that sounds really dangerous to me because Highland Drive's already really dangerous, especially that intersection further down at 45th South and Highland Drive. So those are my comments.
Okay, thank you, Linda, for joining us tonight. Okay, Stephanie, how are we? Anybody else?
I don't have anybody else. I don't know what you want to do about Michael who we can't hear. Wait, there we go.
Can you hear me?
We can. How about...
My name's Michael Roniger. I live at 4533 Highland Drive and this project is going to probably be the, impact me the most. Because the property line is within a couple of feet of the, my garage, which the top of garage is 30 by 35 feet and it is a big deck. So if the trees go, I can be out there on the deck and I'll have all those people looking down on it. Like somebody said, some of those trees aren't the best and they might, you know, and our roof might just get rid of them. But with the trees gone, my whole back, my whole backyard is wide open.
Michael, do you live north of this proposal? Towards 45th South? Oh, we lost him. Darn it. Okay, but I think we understand.
Was he north or immediately north or south of...
That's what I was asking him, but I think he'd have to be north because there's a driveway to the south. So when he's saying there's a garage, it's got to be to the north. Wouldn't you think, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, okay, so...
And I think, and I think we already heard from the neighbor to the immediate south.
We heard from neighbors in that other community, but I don't think we heard from the, the south neighbor.
Wasn't a woman and her husband were both on the call from the south, that Ellen Mitchell?
They live in that community that you can see at the bottom right.
Right there.
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
Okay, so Stephanie, we've had everyone have a chance to speak.
Yes, I have two people that raised their hands that we've already heard from before, so I don't know.
Yeah, no, we're, one, one opportunity each.
Okay.
We're good, unless it's Michael that was cut off.
Well, let's see, he's back again. Let me, let's try again.
Okay.
Michael, are you there?
I'm getting knocked off this.
Michael, we can, we can barely hear you, but our, our question is, do you live north of this proposal?
Yes.
Okay, yes, so you're...
4530.
Okay, okay. Anything else you wanted to add besides your, your yard?
Well, I noticed this was like in stories from north to south were 332. That is going to just really look down. You know, they can just sit there and just look over my whole yard. Maybe if they went 233, well, like I said, if we can keep the trees, then that'll give me some privacy.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Michael, for coming back on. Sorry it's been pushing you off. We apologize for that.
Oh, I dropped me for some reason.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, are you okay with me closing the public hearing if everyone's had a chance to speak?
Yes.
Okay, as the planning commission chair, I'd like to close the public hearing for the rezone from R210 to RM located at 4545 South through 4551 South Highland Drive. Okay, planning commissioners, this is a legislative act tonight, meaning we will be forwarding a positive or negative recommendation to the city council. Remember that the city council will take our recommendation very seriously when making their final decision. The holiday ordinance applicable tonight is 13.07.03.0 point G2. I think it's time to have a discussion. I like how we've done it before. If we could go one by one and hear your comments before we go to a motion, so we understand what direction we're going. So I think we'll start with Chris. Chris, are you ready to give us your opinions?
Yeah, I think so. Especially, John, if you could zoom back out because I think as I'm listening to all of this and trying to let go of preconceived notions about what should be the direction of the city and what we should be supporting as far as general plans and future growth and density and so on and so forth. I have to say, my opinion has changed during the course of this hearing. Because when I look at the character and nature of that entire stretch of R210, I agree with the neighborhood. I think this is too dense and radical, you know, perhaps 50% denser than what it would be if it were redeveloped as an R210, although it could be a very nice development and an acre of land. The question I had for staff and we kind of got a, a bit of an arbitrary answer was what would the density of ability, how many dwelling units could you get on just short of an acre of land in an R210?
It's about eight units an acre because R210 is two units per 10,000 square feet or one per 5,000 if they're attached. So you can do the math. If they're pushing an acre, it would be...
About eight or eight?
Yeah, no more. Well, you know, 43560 is slightly more than 10, but again, you have to take out some road space, so...
Probably get a nice...
Yeah.
Homes or...
Max.
Whatever.
Yeah, max, because again, you have, you have to take out road issues unless it's just a driveway. So anyway, yep.
You know, it's significantly denser than it is currently. How it's currently developed and it would be an increase in value to whoever the property owner is without it being out of character with Tanglewood and with the other twin home projects all around it. And as I had John zoom out, if you look at that whole stretch, that is more in the character of what it could be increased in density and still be consistent with its neighbors. So that's my opinion.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Mary Ann?
Well, I think, I think there's, you know, reasons on both sides, as staff stated in the earliest report. And I do want to thank all the public for being here and contributing. I know as commissioners, we really listen to public comments and put ourselves in that position if we were the one living there. And so to those of you who thought it was a done deal, it's, it's, it's never a done deal until the vote is taken. So thank you for participating. So I think there are an argument could be made for both sides of this issue. I think these are excellent developers and we love what you have done by the Ace Hardware. And I think that density there is appropriate. However, I feel that this density is too much for this particular area. I think that the applicant stated objectives can still be met in the existing zone that they have. The existing zone, this R210, is planning for the future. And when we talk about looking towards the future, these are single-family homes. That's, that's probably not going to be, but I think R210 does give that increased density. And then we go back to the general plan where it says future residential growth should be accommodated by the utilization of current zoning and densities and not on rezoning. Basically, is there density that is unclaimed here that they can use? And I would say, yes, there is. So that's where I would get that. So the fact that the neighbors don't believe that this is in harmony with their existing development in their vicinity, I would agree. I also think taking this, this particular piece and zoning it to RM creates a spot zone in a major area of R210. And that would give us an island of RM zone right there. I, I realize further down and on both sides, there was RM that we probably weren't a part of. But this large section of R210, I would probably vote to do a negative, negative recommendation to the city council.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. Ann? Are you there, Ann?
I was on mute. Um, I appreciate what Mary Ann just said. And I, I'm really, I'm really conflicted because I often like to go straight to what the technical review committee says and what the staff recommendations, because I like to see what, what do they see in the long-range future for Holiday? And looking at the TRC and the staff recommendations, I'm really conflicted because when I, when I went there today, I thought this, this makes, this makes sense for this property. So I am inclined to be, have a positive rec...
Okay, okay. Thank you, Ann. Alisa?
I agree with, I agree with Ann and staff on this. When I visited it over the weekend, it seemed like a, a great use for this particular area. I think the product that is being created in behind the Ace Hardware is great. I think townhouse style living is something that I enjoyed a lot when I lived back east. And it's something that could be utilized. It's very neighborhood oriented. I think it, it creates a different dynamic for a different pool of people. And I think, you know, as, as staff has said, if, if not on Highland Drive, then where? I would, I would venture a guess, though I don't know, that when the two previous or two of the previous subdivisions that we looked at that are about this, Tanglewood and the other gated community, I would bet that they met with some significant resistance when, when the 210 zoning went in. I think in a forward-looking way, given its proximity to that shopping center, giving its proximity to major arteries on 45th and Highland Drive, I think this would be a great area for a rezone.
One more thing to support what Alisa Lloyd just said. When I was there today, I saw this as very much a townhome community. Also, it, it supports the concept of a walkable community. So when the Cottonwood Mall or Holiday Hills is redeveloped, I think that townhome at this, at this location would be truly a part of a larger walkable community. So again, I just feel like I'm inclined towards a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Ann. Howard?
In, in way, in regards to that walkability, this is not a walkable area like we have in the village. I have family that lives very close to this intersection and it's dangerous, just as all these neighbors said. You, you can't just, you know, walk across the street. I bet most of them get in their car to drive over to the Macy's, so... I don't see this as a walkable kind of intersection like we have in the village. That's just based on what I specifically called my family and said, do you feel that this is a walkable area where you want to have this? And they said, no, I get in my car to drive. And if I was living there, I would drive. And...
I think this is, I think this is a lifestyle issue. I, living up by Olympus High School, I have walked there. Because that's a lifestyle that I choose and I don't live very close to there. So I think that's a lifestyle issue. I think you create walkability. You don't just assume that it's not walkable.
Right, I, I would agree, but I, it's my opinion that this is not exactly...
It's definitely different than downtown Holiday Village with that. I mean, that's laughable. It's absolutely different, different than that. However, I think that making, encouraging walkability in other areas is a desirable thing. I don't think the village is the only thing that should be considered walkable.
Sure. Okay, Howard, how are you feeling?
Hey, I'm feeling fine right now. Now, this really is kind of a challenging decision, a little more difficult than some of the others I think we've had to face. The staff's recommendations all have really good points. I empathize with the surrounding neighbors, the communities. We've heard from pretty much everybody that touches this property. They've probably gotten used to and have enjoyed having a property that's not been developed, got lots of trees there. There are concerns of trees coming down or licking out the windows. Hopefully, the, some of those trees can be kept, at least the ones that are on the property lines, maybe. Because it's located on Highland Drive and considering the other kind of uses that are along Highland Drive and the mix that's there, I don't think it is inappropriate to have this kind of a project in with this density. So I'm, I'm leaning towards recommending approval just because of the, the points that the staff bring up. The fact that it's on Highland Drive, a few more townhome units is not going to change the traffic pattern along Highland Drive very much at all. The safety issues can be worked out through the design criteria, through the city or the county, whoever owns the, the, the street there. I really see it more at the fact that the neighbors have enjoyed and even a property that has had no impact to them at all. And now there's going to be something there, which is always a hard thing to, to accept. So again, I'm leaning towards suggesting that it be approved.
Okay, thank you, Howard. Marty?
So after I read the staff report, I, I thought this was kind of a, a no-brainer. After listening to all the comments and reading them, I was impacted. After, again, balancing those sort of two competing interests that have been well articulated by others, I found myself kind of bifurcating the two groups of interest. Um, I found myself kind of bifurcating the two groups of interests here. One were the privacy with the three stories buildings next door and the shade and the garden impacts. You know, those were notable and, um, but that said, given that the height restrictions for one zone or the other would be the same. That kind of negated that concern in my mind. The other group of concerns that I saw were the sort of density, traffic, safety. And, um, to the extent that those voicing those concerns were back in Tanglewood. I saw those as slightly less impactful and to those neighbors living on Highland Drive. I, I saw those also as slightly less impactful because they're already in the middle of a, a major arterial area. So in contrasting those two different groups of concerns. And offsetting them because of the, the real impacts that they would have. I'm, uh, I'm, I'm inclined to award a positive recommendation for this rezone.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, before I give mine, I am going to ask John. Um, a question that he and I discussed yesterday on the grading on this site. Um, can you, can you explain that to the planning commission and the public, what we discussed yesterday, John? John, are you there? You're on mute.
My fault, sorry. I was on mute.
Okay.
Bad habit. Again, uh, all of our heights and holiday are measured from natural grades. You know, as you stand on Highland Drive and look at this property or picture yourself driving by, riding by in a bike, standing on the spot, on the sidewalk. Um, and also, uh, looking at the abutting driveway approaches, there is a bit of a slope as you go up to and enter into this property. So, um, assuming that a, a townhome situ- or townhome situation is built in a row house. Um, majority of the property, I'm assuming from what the developer's point of view is going to be, is a flat situation driving in off of Highland Drive. Sloping up in a driveway usually isn't, um, in a, uh, an accommodating scenario. So, um, removing a majority of that grade to flatten out the, the develop, developable site. Uh, would effectively put the mass of the height down into the ground. Um, I'm, I'm estimating there's a probably about five feet of grade difference from the sidewalk level upward toward, uh, Tanglewood. Um, so what that does is our height's being measured at thirty five feet from existing grade. If you drop the grade five feet, there really, um, there's, there's quite a bit less height exposed from natural grade. However, that being said, that's a double edged sword. Whenever you regrade a site. You're removing grades and topography which support tree canopy. So we can lower the grades to get the heights of the buildings down and have a flat entry scenario. Um, but, uh, you know, we're looking at a site plan which would mention that could possibly create a, a loss of tree canopy. So you can look at it in that light. I think that's what Jan, was that what you were thinking?
Yes, yeah, it was. I wanted to really understand the grading back into the, the property. Thank you, John. Um, and I've always been, um, for density. I, I think density is great. I am, and I think this is an opportunity in the city. Um, I, I am concerned that it's a. Um, that it's kind of a, an island, but, um, I'm not as concerned because it's on Highland Drive. Um, I do have one other question for staff. Highland Drive is not a holiday road, am I correct? Who owns holiday Highland Drive, excuse me?
Jan, we own the east half and the west half is in Mill Creek.
Okay, we, um.
City Street.
Okay, somewhere in there, it was stated that it was going to be widened to eighty feet. Is that correct?
Well, what that means is, is that Highland Drive in our general plan is an eighty foot right of way. So if we don't have, uh, forty foot half width, the property owner. Uh, upon development would have to give us, uh, uh, whatever the width is necessary to get us to that half width. And what I don't know at this time is whether or not that half width has already been developed at forty feet or whether it's at thirty three. Usually, uh, it's no more than a seven foot dedication across the width of the property on Highland.
Do we have a, a middle turning lane right there in front of this property?
Yes.
We do. So it's a three lane or is it a five lane?
Five.
Five lane. Okay.
In each direction.
Okay, so two each way, but there's a middle lane to turn.
Yeah, and I think we probably already have the forty foot width there based on the fact that there's sidewalk.
Okay.
Looks like there's walk there, so.
And there, there is a turn lane there in front of Macy's and it's, it's, it's pretty substantial, so.
So I think that helps, in my opinion, it helps mitigate some of the, um. Some of the traffic there that you can pull into that center lane. And I understand it's a busy street. Um, but Highland Drive was made as a major artery in and out of the city. So I have a tendency for a positive recommendation also. Um, I am wondering if either Ann or Alyssa would give us a motion, um, for this.
Before you go there, can we still further the discussion and ask a few questions of staff?
Yeah, go ahead.
John, is there a limitation on coverage in the R two ten zone? That's different than coverage in an RM zone?
It's like, it is slightly different. I can try to bring up the code really quick, but on the top of my head, RM is sixty forty.
Right.
Uh, R, R two ten will have a percent coverage requirement for based upon the lot coverage. So I think it's probably similar a sixty forty split, but RM is strictly sixty forty.
So when you say coverage, you mean landscaping?
I'm, I mean, the difference between, yeah, impervious surface to landscaping, but also the, the question I have. Because when you look at that aerial right there and you try to imagine fifteen living units. Packed onto that, it's not just a mathematical description of density, it's a circulation issue. It's, I've seen the site plan and I know we're not supposed to be discussing the site plan, but I don't think it would be wise for us to recommend something. That getting tiny little dwelling units that are out of context with the neighborhood. And getting fifteen of them slammed in there and the only way you can get to them is the rest of the site is paved. Uh, is, is a great, does, is a great design strategy or something we should support?
Yeah, so Commissioner Layton, you can see thirteen point three two one hundred. For a mo- for the multifamily zones, uh, which RM would be is sixty percent, no more than sixty percent impervious coverage.
Okay.
Then, of course, they have to comply with all the other associated landscaping requirements.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry, Jan. Go ahead.
Did we lose Jan?
Jan is, is frozen.
All right, didn't.
Quick, make a motion.
You want a motion? Okay.
It is frozen.
I'm looking to you, Ann. You want me to sing that Frozen song? I can't. Please, no. All right, um, I would like to make a motion. To approve the Zone Map Amendment Rezone from R two ten to RM. At the location of forty five forty five south to forty five fifty one south Highland Drive. From the applicant, bear with me, I have to look at my other screen. The applicant, uh, Shelley Atkinson, Sequoia Development. And this recommendation, this positive recommendation is based on the eight points. Provided to us from the TRC. That's my motion.
Clarification on the motion, if I could. Um, and just to be, just to be careful, I, I think your, your motion is to recommend approval, not to approve.
Thank you for that correction, Mr. Allred. I would like to recommend that we approve this.
Yeah.
Zone map amendment.
Yeah, because this goes to the council who has ultimate say, just to clarify for the public who may be listening.
Thanks, Paul. This is Alyssa. I would like to second that.
Do we need to wait for Jan for the vote?
I think Chris as our, um. Chair can go ahead. Oh, here comes Jan.
No, I'm not ready for that. We can, I, we could continue it as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I am sorry. Um, I don't know what happened to my internet connection.
Well, Jan, we have a motion and a second already on the table. You just need to call for the vote.
Oh, I am sorry. I don't know what happened. Let me, I, I came in on my phone. There we go. Maybe.
Do you want to hear?
Sorry, I don't know what happened.
Welcome back.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And who is the motion?
Motion was me, Ann Mackin, and it was seconded by Alyssa Lloyd.
Okay, so now we've got to go for a vote. Okay, so Chris, thanks for, um, chiming in there for me.
Yeah.
Um, Chris.
Treading water till you got back.
Yes. Okay, Chris?
Uh, I vote nay.
Okay, Mary Ann?
Nay.
Ann?
Yay.
Alyssa? Yay. Howard?
Yay.
Marty?
You're muted, Marty.
Marty? Don't run away like I did.
That's yay affirmative.
And chair votes aye. So that is five in favor and two opposed. Okay, um, thanks, Planning Commission, and thank you, staff. Thank you, um, the public for joining. Sometimes these are really hard decisions and we try to do our best to do what's best for our community. Okay, number two on our agenda tonight.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for those who are still listening in, uh, we should let them know that there will be a subsequent public hearing. On this issue at a future date at the city council. And that a similar notice to what was sent out for the planning commission meeting tonight. Will be mailed to everyone, uh, who got a previous notice. So just be watching for that and, uh, and for participating at the city council. Uh, uh, at that appointed date and time.
Okay, thank you, Paul. I appreciate that. And so you know that we are just, um, sending on a recommendation to the city council. They make the final decision. Um, okay, um, number two on our agenda tonight is an action item for the approval of our twenty twenty one. Planning Commission calendar that we discussed at our last meeting. Um, we made a couple changes. Um, to some dates. Um, so can I have a motion, um, to approve this calendar?
Okay, wait a minute.
Yes, Mary.
I thought we had changed the November second date and moved it to the sixteenth.
Oh, we had, yes.
Back to back meetings on that day.
Well, we, we can't have it on the second because that is voting day, so that should be moved to the sixteenth.
So with that correction.
Okay, thank you for catching that. Okay, when you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission calendar. Um, for twenty twenty one with the aforementioned correction.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Howard will give us a second. Let's vote on that. Chris?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Alyssa?
Aye.
Howard?
Yes.
Marty?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So that's seven in favor, zero opposed.
Chair Ricks, um, I'm sorry, I'm still backing Commissioner Ricks. That was, uh, moving the second to the sixteenth, so you have meetings on the ninth and the sixteenth, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Okay, number three on the agenda is the approval of the Planning Commission bylaws. I hope everyone had a chance to read those. They were given to us at our last meeting. And we made a, um, John put in the few suggested changes that we had. And, um, did every, was everyone able to read through those? And does anyone have any additional ones?
Uh, Jan, I wasn't at the meeting last week, I, our last two weeks ago. But I have, I have a question. Um, I wasn't aware that we had an alternate, but I was thinking about an alternate. But I feel like if we did have an alternate. That person would need to attend all the meetings so they could be up to speed. I feel like, um, attending as many meetings as possible, like Sequoia tonight. Um, we're familiar with them. They've come before us before and we're familiar with, uh, the products that they build. So I feel like if we had an alternate. They would still need to regularly attend. And I know we're not going to have an alternate, but I just think that. If we did or we contemplated that, they would still have to come to every meeting. Does that make sense?
Yes, and we did discuss that, Ann. And what we really discussed is it's hard to find planning commissioners. And it would be very hard to find an alternate that would have to attend every meeting and they could never vote. And they could never be a part unless they were filling in for somebody. So that's part of the reason, down a little farther, is that we added in, let's see, what, what part is that? That, um, a. Is that, let's see, is that in B, the officers and duties?
Uh, no, that would be A.
Officers and duties, oh wait, where did I, I added that? Oh, down below. Oh, right there, yes. So, um, what we were saying is a third. Um, to, in order to make a quorum, this is in the officers and duties, isn't this?
Yeah, I, I, I saw that. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that we could add a fourth person. Um, with technology that couldn't be there in person and make that quorum so the meeting could still go forward.
I really like that. I really like that, Jan. I remember, uh, last year you were traveling and you wanted. To be a part of a meeting that was a really, a really important vote, but unfortunately our bylaws did not allow that. So I think it's important, especially in this age of technology. Um, if we just couldn't be present for whatever reason, uh, we could, uh, chime in virtually. I, I, I really think that's an important addition. Thank you.
Yeah, so that was one thing we discussed. Anything else that anyone wants to add?
I have mixed feelings about the three person, um, majority. Now that we've opened it up to include electronic means. Um, I just don't, don't know that three is really enough to make some of the changes that, that we have the power to make. Uh, did any of you guys have hesitations that if we're allowing for virtual, can we then keep the, the four member? Or for whatever requirement that all four would have to vote?
Oh, all, all would have to be in favor, is that what you're saying, Mary Ann?
If there was a time when only four people showed up to a meeting. That all four would have to be in favor of it or they would have to continue that item versus allowing three. To go ahead and do a majority. I, I just don't know that that situation comes up often enough that we need to change our bylaws to accommodate it.
I, I agree, especially with the virtual option, um, any, any member could, you know, come in virtually.
Especially if it was a big issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, anybody else?
Um, actually, Paul actually spoke to two specific things within the past year or two that would have had to have been delayed. Because of, um, no, we didn't have a quorum. no, we didn't have a quorum. I would hate to think, I would hate to stop uh, work from being accomplished in those rare situations, simply because we didn't have unanimity.
I agree with that to a certain extent, but I also feel like is, is the public being served by having such a small group make such big changes?
I, I entertain the same sort of competing interests. I think I'm, I think I'm gravitating to Alyssa's position mostly on the, on the grounds that at the end of the day, we're not really making important decisions. We're just making recommendations for important decisions. That buffers the concern a little bit.
Well, we are doing recommendations to the City Council on certain things, but other ones, we're, we're making the decisions. So.
In my tenure as, as a commissioner, I think there was one occasion where we did not have a meeting because we didn't have a quorum. I think it is truly the exception. And with the virtual option, I just don't think we're going to run into not having a quorum. What do you guys think? Well, but, but then it's not, it's not that we won't have a quorum. It's that if we only have four, it will have to be a unanimous vote to accomplish anything. And we agree a lot of the time, but unanimity tonight, for instance, would have
Yeah.
Unanimity is kind of hard to achieve sometimes.
And I think in this situation, what we're actually trying to accomplish is clarifying your, what type of motion carries. In the event of a quorum of four members, a two-two vote would essentially fail a motion. So what this does is clarifies that you need to, in order for a motion to carry, unanimous vote means a three-one, at least three-one majority.
Unanimous means four. Yeah, unanimous would be everyone.
Oh, sorry, I mean, right. I'm sorry, I meant consensus, sure.
Yeah. Well, it would be a majority of the entire body.
Yeah. I'm in favor of keeping it a three-one in the event of a four member.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that. It's still a majority.
And I also feel like it doesn't happen very often.
And also, if we were faced with a really big decision, and there was just four of us, we probably would be inclined to continue it, to bring in, we've done this before, to bring in more voices, especially if it was something big, and that has happened.
That's a good point.
So I think we ought to leave it. I don't think it happens very often, and if it becomes an issue, maybe in the future, Planning Commission can change that. I do have two other things to ask about on, it's before, it's right before what you've got on the right here. That the, so we have, let's see, in my notes, where it says, number five, and then where it says Commissioners attempt to visit each property on the agenda. I have not been reading that since we had our training with the city attorney, because he asked us not to visit the properties. And I'm wondering how everyone feels about that, because we never really talked about it. And should we continue to say that's what we're going to do? Or how does everyone feel about that?
Jan, my recollection is that he clarified himself to distinguish between a, a drive-by visit as opposed to a get out and have a conversation with the owner and, and lift up the rocks and kick the tires and check out the bushes.
Yeah, that, that was my recollection as well.
So, but do you, do you feel like the way it's written qualifies for what he's saying? We attempt to visit each property on the agenda where the location, the nature of the neighborhood, existing structures and uses related to the proposed change are noted. So.
There's that. There's one more thing, Jan. In the past, especially in the months where it's not dark, we have gone with Jonathan or Paul. We meet, and then we all go together.
Yeah.
That, and we, we actually get some context. I always found it really helpful was when John or Paul was with us, where they could say like, you know, they would sort of explain things, because if we just do a drive-by, we may not have the nuances that John and Paul could show to us. So I would like to continue to encourage the commissioners to at least visit the property and get some context. And then going forward, if it's still possible, where we would rendezvous at City Hall at about, in the past, we did it about 5:30 or whatever was convenient, and we would do it just before the meeting, and any commissioners that were available could all go. We would pile into one car or multiple cars. But, you know, we had a narrative from, from staff. So I, I feel strongly that we need to continue to visit the sites if possible, either individually or as a team.
Okay.
I've got a comment. Maybe we should say something like, when appropriate, commissioners should attempt to visit each property on the agenda. It leaves that open just a little bit, but still provides encouragement.
Yeah, that's true. Can we add that language there?
It would say, when appropriate, commissioners should attempt to visit each property.
Or not, maybe not say should, but visit each property where appropriate commissioners attempt to visit or are encouraged to visit.
But don't you think, Mary Ann, in the past, actually going to some of these properties, we had an aha moment where drawings and schematics really didn't help us recognize the proximity to the neighbors and things like that. So I, I feel like going there and getting the, getting the contextual understanding is really, for me, the, the visual was, is always been really important.
Oh, yes, for sure. I don't think we're talking about not doing site visits as soon as we are able, especially because so often, you know, fences or some things need to be seen from the backyard.
Yeah, we know that.
Yeah, I, I don't know how we want to word that to cover ourselves legally, or if we just need to know that we don't talk to the owners and we don't talk to other people. It's just our group with planning staff to look at the site.
You know, we could probably add in to what Howard has requested or recommended, some sort of caveat or asterisk that says
Yes.
in conjunction with, because down here, you talk about procedure, conduct and decorum. A member who has happened to have contact with an applicant or anybody on the site needs to disclose that in the meeting. So you can, you can add in here something to the effect of, I lost it.
Can we see what you're looking at, John? I can't see your screen.
I was, I went too fast. I'm sorry.
And do we want to disclose if we've done that? Wouldn't that kind of be admitting guilt that we did something wrong?
No. I think what we're admitting is that we've gone to the site as a commission and met with the applicant, and they showed us around, you know.
Well, and I think that is a publicly noticed meeting that we're going to do site visits, and so I, I think the public is encouraged to go in their own vehicles, right? I mean, there have been times where the applicant or other people have been on the site with us, and I'm fine with that.
But I think it is fair that if perhaps as a commissioner, something comes before us and it's really literally in our backyard, and we have neighbors saying, hey, this is coming for the Planning Commission. I think it's important that we share when we come into these meetings that, hey, I've had a couple of people in my neighborhood reach out to me and, and, you know, let their thoughts be known. I think it's important that we have full disclosure and transparency.
Well, I think on those retaining walls, how important was that to go?
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think, John, we need to just have some, like Howard said, you know, when appropriate, commissioners will attempt to visit each property on the agenda. Just kind of give it that way, and I'll start reading that again. I haven't read it for the last several meetings because I was a little unclear on kind of what Todd wanted us to be doing, and he told me not to read it anymore. So.
Do we have any other councils?
Wait, wait a minute. Wait, Jan, can you say that again? Todd Gottfried told you not to read that anymore?
He said, I said, should I still be reading that? And he said, it would probably be better if you didn't, because he
Why? Somebody who's married to an attorney, I think that was a very broad CYA comment. Just forget about it. It's been being read for years. It's all good.
It has, it has.
I like that the, that the people that came to the hearing or the people that are there know that we've been to the site and we've seen it, or, you know, done these drive-bys, and we're not just, you know, on the back. Yeah.
Okay. So do we want to add that in, John?
Yeah, in fact, I'm going to have Brad jump in, because I think if you had two caveats to remember is, one, don't show up as a quorum. And two, if you have a conversation with anybody on site, disclose it.
Yes, the, the other thing I would add to that is if you're going to go visit the site, and, and I think there is value to visiting the site, but don't visit the site alone. You don't want to have your impartiality or your integrity questioned. And if you do have a personal relationship, just in general, with the applicant, it's better to over-disclose that. That doesn't always mean you have to refuse yourself. But at least, you know, make sure that you make that disclosure so that, you know, the public, it, it's important for the public to understand that these decisions aren't made before they come. And if there are commissioners that have those kind of, I guess, relationships that can influence their vote, that, that at least the disclosure is made, and, and people are aware of that, and fellow commissioners are aware of that.
Oh, Brad, I have a question for you. Like today, having our meeting today, I wanted to go and to the site in daylight. So I just carved out a, you know, half hour. I went there. And it really, I didn't get out of my car, but I just wanted to understand the address. Where was it on Highland Drive, because I couldn't really visualize it. So I went, just so I would be fully prepared. Do you think it'd be a better idea that I call a fellow commissioner and say, hey, meet me there? Do you think it'd be better if we go as, as, not alone? Do you think?
If it's a drive-by, and you're not getting out and having conversations, then I don't see any problem with that. But yeah, if you're going to go and stop and walk the site and, you know, interact with anybody on the site, don't go alone.
Now, wait a minute. Did you say that we shouldn't go as a quorum? Because we've always gone as a group, and this has been noticed
If it's been, that's the only thing. If it's been noticed and you are onsite with staff and staff is driving you there, that's, there's nothing wrong with the field trip, as long as everybody is participating, or even, even if it's a quorum, you know, obviously, you're not making decisions on a site visit, right? You're getting, gathering information, getting input. Doing that as a group has no, no concerns whatsoever on that.
Okay, so I want to, yeah, I definitely want to keep that. All right.
A question, a question for Jonathan. Going forward, Jonathan, do you think it would be helpful that you notice us that, hey, let's do a site visit daylight hours and join Jonathan for those sites that he really feels, let's, let's have as many commissioners go. Should we notice it? Should we have an email where Jonathan says, I want you guys to come with me, come see this? What do you think?
Well, sure. I mean, when we do have the daylight hours, we do put that on the agenda as a field trip item. And those that want to participate can come early. We'll be prepared to take them on that field trip. And it is noticed on the agenda, so any part, member of the public can join that group as well.
Okay, but don't you think we need to change the wording just a little bit on this? And then, or do you think we should leave it as is? Brad?
You know, having, so Todd did not talk much about any of these things, so I'm going to let it, I think you can approve this if, if you'd like to approve it tonight with the caveat that have, just get Todd's input on, on those couple of changes, and any additional that may be necessary.
Okay. Okay.
I think, I just don't want to step with Todd said in the past, but in general, because I, because I just don't know all the context for, for the changes, so. But from a legal standpoint, you can approve it as is if you want to put in information that says, you know, site visits are encouraged before on everything, but make sure you're not alone, or just, you know, limit or avoid interaction with anyone on site if you are alone. You know, those are kind of things that you could add in there. But, but site visits are important, and I think, you know, you would be doing a disservice to the community to avoid them. But help give yourself the context in order to you know, be affect the future development of the city.
Okay, thanks, Brad. Um, okay.
Something to add.
Oh, Paul?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts. We all used to go as a group.
We did.
And then we were distinctly given encouragement to not do that unless we were going to take minutes and allow members of the public to let, to invite them to attend and come out in their own car, because the Planning Commission's business should be done in the public forum. And so the concern that's been expressed many times in the past with other cities has been, and I, and I will tell you right now, in years gone by, I have participated in cities going to sites, and the Planning Commission more or less making their minds up about, you know, how they were going to act on items while they were out on field trip. And that's really what became the cautionary tale for field trips, is that if you go out as a group and you're really discussing the details of the application on whatever site that you're at, and start coming to a decision-making, that's dangerous. And so I remember very distinctly that we were encouraged to really kind of move away from going out as a group, as much as we found that useful in the past. And I, I really remember us being encouraged to go on our own, and if you, and to avoid conversations with the public out there, because there have, I guess there's been legal action against cities when planning commissioners or groups go out and they start to make decisions, and it's not done in the public forum. So you've had these substantive conversations either with each other, with staff, or with residents, and then you come back and make your decisions based on what happened in the field. And we were told, you've got to take minutes. You've got to have somebody there with a notebook. So there was a while there. Whereas staff, we were going out, and we were telling people right on the agenda, you're welcome to join us and go from site to site, meet at City Hall, but we had to take a notebook if somebody went along, and we had to be careful about what we discussed. So in essence, what I'm saying is, I think it would be safer to, and not to pour cold water on what Ann Mackin said, because I, I think some of those are the most important and best times that we've had as staff with our planning commissions, when we go out together and look at things. But there's a danger in it, in the perception of it. And perception is often reality in the minds of the public. So I, I would probably recommend that, you know, you can do what you want with the language. But as a matter of course, going forward, I would suggest to the Planning Commission that you probably avoid going as a group. And just go look at it on your own and do what Brad said, which is, you're welcome to go out and kind of, you know, do a drive-by. But if you go as a group, it, it's that perception. So do what you want with language, but I'm pretty sure that the direction we've gotten has been pretty firm. Kind of avoid the, the field trips as a group. But if you're going to do it, if you do do it, make sure you take notes, and anybody is welcome to join you. And, and even that, I think, is fraught with potential problems. So.
That's hard.
Yeah.
Brad, am I off on any of that?
No, I mean, it's really difficult. I'd really hate for the Planning Commission, as a group or individually, be accused of in a meeting of saying, well, you haven't even visited the site. You don't even know what the slope is, or this nature of this building is, you know. If you individually reviewed the site and reviewed notes and compared notes in the meeting, that's completely different than actually having a field trip, and I think it's more conducive.
Stephanie, did you have a comment?
No, I was just going to say, if you do have a quorum that goes on field trip, you do have to take minutes. So you're going to have to somehow record it, and yeah.
Because I thought in the past, we always went and we weren't a quorum for that reason. We tried to be not in a quorum. It was three or less.
And we went in separate cars.
Yes.
We kind of arrived at the same time.
It's still a quorum. If you're going in two cars and you're getting out and walking around together, I mean, you still have a quorum going.
Yeah.
It's just because you didn't have a, a car big enough to fit everybody in.
Yeah.
Again, I love those times, but.
I, I have a question. Um, going forward, um, if the, uh, the, the planning team thinks it makes sense for all of us, or as many of us can go and visit a site with one of the members of the planning team, then we go? And if there's more than four of us, then?
We'll take notes.
We take notes and we take notes or we, uh, do a video, whatever, but I, I would hate for us to be reluctant to go and see a site and get the, not only get it contextually, but get Jonathan or Paul's perspective on it, the nuances that we wouldn't have. So I think going forward, I don't know if we necessarily have to put it in, in, into this document, but if there is a time where the, the, the planning team in, says, hey, let's, let's try to all go before the meeting to see this. Because we want, we think it's important.
Okay, so are we leaving the, um, verbiage as is, or are we adding to it? What was our decision there?
Well, do we want to continue this discussion and run it by Todd and say, y- you know, because I agree wholeheartedly with Ann that those visits are important, but we want to make them legal. So what do we need to do so that we can still do the visits and make them legal and? Or do we really, do we really have to stop that?
Brad?
Let me take this one. Um, so the, we've talked about it, the only, it's all been covered here. If you want to make it legal with a quorum and visit or have the entire planning commission, you just have to make it, you have to publicly notice it, allow the public to come, and then you've got the additional, uh, you know, I guess, obligation under Open and Public Meetings Act to take notes and have minutes for it. Have that portion. It doesn't have to be, I mean, if it's noticed on the same day as a regular meeting, you can include it in the regular minutes and just, you know, have it under a heading, um, the field trip minutes, but you don't want to be having the public debate and having any deliberation or decision-making happening while you're on the field trip. It's just simply for information gathering. And I do like the idea of not taking, you know, taking multiple cars is what you should do, not have the whole, not have a quorum in each, in one car and only part of the planning commission in another, or have it all in one. It's just, it's just to stay, it's to avoid the appearance of having decisions made before you come and have the deliberation before the public.
And I feel in, in all the years that I've gone on these field trips, I don't think we've ever made a decision in the field. I think we just said, oh, okay, yeah, that is interesting, that makes sense. So, and then we get back and we have our pre-meeting and we have our meeting, but we have a different mindset because we have it, um, fresh in our head of what it really is. So, I don't ever remembering ever making a decision onsite.
And Jan, yeah, let me clarify, I, I, I did not want to give the impression that that's what we had done. Not at all.
Correct. I, no, I didn't get that. Chris, did you have something to say?
I just said, good answer, Jan. Good answer.
No, but I, I, seriously, we've been out many times and I've never felt like we were on the side saying, oh yeah, we're gonna vote against this. Never. No, we never did that.
It's the public perception that we want to manage.
Yes.
Talking about. So it sounds like we can leave it as is, and if we have a quorum, we take minutes.
Okay.
And if you're, and if you're gonna go as a group during the, the the summertime when you've got those out, because remember, we don't do field trips in the wintertime because of the lateness of the hour, right? It's dark. So we don't do those. But if you're gonna, if you want to do the site visits, it's okay. Just remember, there needs to be some rules attached to it. I just have to be careful, because the end, the overarching rule is simple. The planning commission's business should be done in the public forum. And it begs the question, if you're out there walking around with each other and/or staff, are you doing planning commission business, number one? And number two, is it in the public forum if you're doing that?
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Um, anything else? I kind of had a feel that we, should we add anything about having Zoom meetings? Or is that only emergency stuff, or can we add that if appropriate?
No.
No?
Don't do anything about, don't do anything about Zoom meetings, just leave it as electronic meetings, because Zoom may go away and we'll, we have other options.
But it does say electronic.
Yes, just leave it as electronic.
Okay, okay. And then I only have one other thing, John, where it says the meeting procedure. I have always said three minutes per person and in those, in here it says two minutes. So is, is that something that we've changed? I've always thought it was three. How about anybody else?
I, I've always done three, but we try and be, you know, sensitive to what they're saying and.
Yes, right.
It just kind of gives us the option to cut people off. Two minutes is awfully short.
Two minutes, they can barely, uh, get going.
So, why didn't we change that to three minutes per person?
Yeah.
That may have been something that came out of the mall. Couple of years ago, we were giving a little.
Oh. Oh, that makes sense, actually.
Well, then maybe we want to leave it at two minutes. And then just let them have three minutes. Can we, can we say at least two minutes? And then Jan can announce how much on the given night we're gonna give them.
Oh, if we say at least, yes, I think that's better. Because I've always said three.
Yeah.
So when I read this, I thought, uh-oh, am I doing this wrong?
But, but Jan, it, again, it's contextual. Sometimes we have uh, someone who's speaking and whether they are speaking for the group or just for themselves, they, they really have a, the, really the first speaker is quite compelling and they bring out all the points. So yeah, at least two minutes. I like that.
Yeah, so at least. Okay, and then my next one is in H, which is relationship with the city council. I have this on page four. On number two, it says, on matters that are forwarded to the council with commission's recommendation, the chair shall be the designated representative for the commission at such meetings. So am I supposed to be going to city council meetings when we do a recommendation?
Uh, Stephanie can chime in here, but I, I think it's upon request is really how we've been handling that. If we, if the mayor or the, or, um, one of the, the mayor pro temp would like to have, uh, the representatives from this, from the planning commission sort of summarize what the commission's feeling was, they will call or ask us to, um, request one of you to, uh, be re- representative. That's happened a few times. Yeah.
And Jan, if you feel there's an, uh, item that you forwarded on to the council that you feel that you really need to be there to, to, you know, per, to tell about what the planning commission talked about, then just, you just need to let me know.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just looking at it thinking, I just want to make sure I'm doing it right, but can it say in here if the city council asks or something on matters that are forward to the council, then the chair will show, and then I'll never be able to go and then I'll just make the vice chair show up anyway.
Hey, that, that, that works.
I think that's a, you know what, I think you should put that in there.
The duty of the vice chair.
Vice chair is, is, yeah, so the vice chair is.
Is the vice chair even listening is what I want to know.
The vice chair is required to attend all.
Yes, hello.
All city council, re- regardless of whether there is a, a recommendation coming from the planning commission, but the vice chair in their, uh, role should attend all meetings. What do you guys think? Is that unanimous?
Yeah, so, all, all I'm saying is, I, I think it needs to be clear that, um, because it, it makes it sound like I have to go every time we do a recommendation, but like Stephanie said and John, if it could read that if the city council requests a representative from the commission, the chair will go. Um, Brad, do you have something to say on that?
Typically, um, I mean, typically in most public media or most council decisions, uh, they usually have copies of minutes and staff reports and understand what the, uh, it's only gonna be on highly, you know, controversial decisions that they'll do that. So, I think upon request is kind of goes without saying, but if you want to put it in there, there's nothing wrong legally with that.
Okay, because I just, I, I read that and I think, oh gosh, I have to go every time we put a recommendation in.
You're, you're not gonna have very many planning commissioners if they have to go to that many meetings.
Yeah, e- exactly. So, um, if we could just change the wording upon request or?
Well, it can also be, um, the, the planning commission chair or another designated representative may attend the city council meeting because it, you know, upon request or because they want to. It might not be because the city council wants you, but you, you might want to go and clarify, is what I'm saying. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
It doesn't happen very often.
Yes, yeah.
So if you put, may, may attend for, to explain, you or, or somebody else.
Or you, you achieve the same result by leaving it as is in terms of showing up, even if you're not invited.
You, you are all members of residents of, of Holiday, so you have a right to be at any city council meeting you want.
You can go anyway, just as a, just as a, uh, resident. Okay. Okay, let's, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't have to go to all those meetings. Okay. Okay, and there was one other weird thing that we talked about with Todd that I'm wondering if it should go in the bylaws or if we should just ignore it. He talked about us texting as commissioners during the meetings, that if something happened, he couldn't protect our phones and any of our conversations if the meeting went crazy. Does something need to be said about that in our bylaws?
May I weigh in on that?
Yeah, Brad, go ahead.
I, I think that's unnecessary to put in the bylaws, although, you know, Todd will bring that up in every training he will ever do. With any planning commission, because it, it's just come up and that, it, it's a scary, it's come up and I, and I know Todd has put it, there's been, I know he has a list of about, a running list, that's, I think it's ten to twelve articles long now, where text messages between, between either council members or planning commissioners have been brought to light by a grandma request.
Yeah, so I, so you just, it just, we just need to know that, but as we.
That, don't, that, when in doubt, and that's always, you should be in doubt about texting during a meeting. Just avoid, avoid texting during a meeting, unless it's your family, but avoid texting each other during a meeting.
But, uh, but again, that was the first time I ever heard that was just in this last training with Todd. And I've been on the commission for five plus years and that's never, never even heard it before. So I think.
Jan, I think he was referring to, there was an immediate, just prior to that, our meeting, where the Salt Lake School Board was, um.
Oh, you're right.
They were texting and unfortunately, the texts were, um, quite, um, inappropriate and, and not, and, and not flattering and, and it came to light through a grandma request and it, it really was, um, quite, quite un. So, I, I, I think for us, I think it makes perfect sense that we don't text each other unless we, like, Ann, you're on mute, you know, things, things like that, like, hey, you're not, we can't hear you, we can't see you. The texting has to do, it's contextual to the, the meeting or, um, you're asking a question like, hey, I didn't get that, I didn't get the latest email from Jonathan, can somebody send it to me? But they have to be relevant.
Appropriate.
And they have to be more pers- like maybe procedural or, um, having to do with, um, d- documents or, you know, you're, you're on mute.
Well, I, I've had a hard time getting into meetings before and needed to let somebody that was in the meeting know that I'm not in the meeting and, so I mean, I just think.
Rule of thumb is to avoid that, but if, like that, that's not a big deal. Like, I mean, if, if, if the grandma request comes in and says, hey, hey, Commissioner Layton, I need your, uh, both commissioners, Layton, I need your, uh, text messages and they come back and they say, hey, you're muted, you know, nobody's get, I mean, th- there's a non-story there, it's an on-issue, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Questions for that, but if, if it's, hey, I'm voting no on this and here's why I expect you to vote no, otherwise, you know, I'm gonna make your life difficult or whatever.
Yes.
Those are the things that you just, you know, don't, don't be sending texts like that. But if it's a, hey, you're on mute or did any, can anybody send me this? I didn't quite get it. I went to my wrong email and I don't have access to that now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Jan, I'm sorry for sending you those texts.
That you couldn't get into the meeting? Yeah.
Oh, not at all.
Yeah. Okay, um, so do we want to, um, are we okay by approving the planning commission bylaws as they are written? Can I have a motion to approve?
Uh, this is Chris and I would like to make a motion to approve the bylaws as amended and written.
Um, do we have?
Lisa, I second it.
Okay, let's have a vote. Chris?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Ann?
Aye.
Alisa?
Aye.
Howard?
I saw him.
Oh, did he?
You're muted, Howard.
Okay, he's an I and Marty?
I'm an I.
Okay, Marty?
Marty's an I as well.
Okay, and chair votes aye, so that's seven in favor, zero opposed. Now we're gonna move on to number four. It's a work session to review pending ordinance amendments. So, um, John has broken it into a couple categories, so take it away, John.
Thank you. Uh, no, I, I don't want to take very much time on this. We are proposing as staff, uh, for the next six months at least to have a, a permanent item on the agenda, which would be for strictly legislative items. We need to move quickly on quite a few situations that have come from the state as well as some housekeeping items that have, um, is the dire need of updating and clarifications, so. Um, I'm gonna be proposing that, uh, a, a permanent line item or agenda item be on your agendas for the next foreseeable future to deal with these category one, category two type text amendments. Um, category ones being very high-level situations, state mandated, uh, amendments to our land use, uh, chapters uh, and any moratoriums that the city council might enact. Category two would be mostly needful updates, clarifications, policy modifications that need to be added into, and anything that would be trickling down from the category one uh, type of land use situation. So, so for example, um, you have been reviewing our, our waterways protections laws and updating that situation. Um, if you haven't, I'll be happy to talk to you about it. Um, via email or in person, I, I'd be happy to give you an update. We have come up with a final draft, uh, between myself and our city engineer, Jared Bunch, that would fall under a category two situation. And, uh, you have already had a first hearing on this and made some comments, which we're, we're trying to clarify and trying to use as many um, matrix tables, diagrams. I know those were very helpful in our last fencing, uh, ordinance amendment. Um, so that, that's the type of situation that you're gonna be seeing from this time forward. Instead of having these work session items, which not very, we, we, we get these points in the meetings, we're all differently uh, wasted and, uh, Chris Jensen, I lose, I lose Chris all the time about this time of the night. And he's, you, we, we just need to have something that allows us to keep moving forward, so.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, yeah, see?
And he means Chris Layton, not Chris Jensen, for the record.
No, I mean.
He had to get a snack.
Sorry.
Anyway, so if that makes sense, I mean, that's, that's essentially what the staff has been proposing for. So the next meeting you'll have at the beginning of the year will be a permanent light item, we'll have a couple of these on. Um, and then accompanying that will be a full schedule of events, um, which is a timeline for every one of these uh, code amendments that you're gonna be seeing, so that we can keep on track, so that you'll know what's coming up, where it's at in the process, when it's going to city council.
I like that.
May, may possibly be one of those times when, um, Jan, you might, or maybe either yourself or designate someone from uh, the commission to represent the commission on their recommendation, so. That's essentially why I wanted to put this on. That's essentially why I wanted to put this on tonight for a work session, I've not necessarily go through all of these items. But let, to let you know that we're gonna be talking about these in the future. Permanently.
Great, great. Um, thanks, John, we, we look forward to you in your new position, um, and. Um, being in charge of us, and we appreciate your guidance, we always have, and we will continue to. Support what you present to us, because you've done a fantastic job. It's a, a transition to um, to have Paul leave. Because he's been a very important, insightful um person in all of this, so. Um, we're all gonna kind of fill the transition.
Yeah, I appreciate that, you know, those definitely are big shoes to fill, and you know, hopefully. I can help you in anything that you need from us to, to make your job easier. To feel as though you're informed, to make in decisions that you feel are appropriate for your community. You know, we, um, we, we love you guys, and that's something that we hold dear to our hearts, is making sure that you are comfortable and. In this situation right now, even though we're meeting remotely, um, to have this much information in your hands is extremely important to us.
Thank you, and Marty and Howard, you guys have been such a great addition to our group, I think. Um, we've melded very well together, and you guys have just slid right in and become a part of us, so. Thank you for all you've done so far, because um, it takes a village as we're learning, and. We discuss things and help each other understand our positions, and I feel like. Now that we're not together, but when we'd walk away from the um city offices, we were all still friends regardless of how we voted that night, and. I've appreciated that um with everybody.
And Marty and Howard, I can't wait till all of this. Twenty twenty is over and we move into twenty twenty-one, and we get to meet you live and in person, and then Jonathan Cherling. Will make some divine meal for us.
We'll look forward to it.
Yeah.
It's a. The bar's pretty high for you, I mean, you've got some really great staff, but.
It's a four-course meal, sometimes five, but. Stepping into those shoes that Paul already has left for you.
Lasagna really puts you over the top, doesn't it?
I love the wonderful meals that you make for us, which has actually facilitated. Um, all of us getting to know each other by having that meal together, so.
Totally agree.
I'm, I'm looking forward to it, so the first uh one, Jonathan, I think it should be like a four-course French meal, like a two.
Yeah, we won't set the bar too high. Yeah. Well, everybody, thank you, and um, happy holidays. And hopefully in twenty twenty-one, we can start meeting together, but I think we still have at least six months of. These um electronic meetings, and um. Love you all, I think you're all great, and I appreciate all you do to support me.
Thanks, Jan.
Um, do I have a motion? A motion to adjourn?
This is Mary Ann, and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
This is Alisa, I second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Meeting adjourned at eight thirty-nine.
Thanks, everybody.